I can go down. And no bicycle racks either.
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
Board members, if you haven't turned on your microphones, please do so at this time.
I'm good. I'll see you later.
Yes, we did. They started down at Janham and ended up in San Jose. So many, and I don't know exactly, I know she did National Geographic, but so many of the things, like for you and I, are cruise-based that go up there. Cindy gets seasick, she gets Martian sick. We just had European River Cruise a couple years ago.
Oh, thank you too much. Thanks a lot.
I have that on my computer, yes. Just one, correct.
This one, the one that we don't talk about. Spartans of the house. The masks, I don't know. And then this Spartan's of the house.
See, when we were in Puerto Rico, we sent a day of sailboat, like there was probably seven or eight, they sent you an hour or so over there, so we went to a beach area and that stuff. Just probably 10 miles of the cabin in the boat. Cindy seemed saying that. But it's not much. Oh, yeah, just, she just said.
It's not very optimal waiting on the clock.
You took your chair with you.
What's that? Oh, yeah. You got to fast forward to those people.
I just, it's not very optimal waiting for the clock. Usually, everybody's waiting for us.
Okay, the time is now 6:30. We will call to order the public session of District 186's meeting for August 16, 2001. First item on the agenda is on item 3.1, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda is item 4.1, which is approval of the agenda for August 16, 2021.
Aye.
Is there a motion?
Miller?
Aye.
Ringer?
Aye.
Is there any discussion?
Zimmers?
Do we need to amend the agenda?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
That is seven aye votes.
Yes. All right, so hang on one second here.
That's on you, Mr. Miller.
All right, next item up for agenda is 5.1, public comments will occur during the public
Hope you would like to move to public comments.
comments portion of the meeting.
I'd make the motion to move to public comments.
The board will not allow interruptions during the meeting.
I'll move.
Okay. Is there any discussion? If you're interested in addressing the board, fill out the required public participation And we will move those public comments to right after 6.1, the superintendent's comments. at the board meetings form and submit to Ms. Hammers. Please email your phone number and topic of discussion for agenda to B O E S P S at Is that correct?
Just after old business is where we did it last.
186.org if you wish to participate via telephone. Oh, old business. Oh, after 7.1.
Yes.
All right. So, thank you. Is there any discretion? Seeing none, Ms. Hammers.
Okay, so this will be on the amend, the motion to amend.
If anyone has, needs to fill out the form and wants to address, please. Most of that, yes. And I believe, oh my gosh, was it May, April?
Austin?
Aye.
Blissett?
Aye.
Janice.
Leowulf?
Yes.
Aye.
Was it May or April?
Mars?
Which one?
Aye.
For 5.2.
Miller?
When did we interview her?
Aye.
Ringer?
Aye.
It's been a while.
Zimmers?
Yeah, it has been a while.
Aye.
That is seven aye votes.
Well, yeah, this is, this is always a highlight when we bring in our student board member. Okay, and we'll go back to the original motion?
Correct.
To approve the agenda?
Yes, and I did not hear who seconded that. I heard Mr. Zimmers' motion.
Austin.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Austin.
The way that this reads to Ms. Hammers is that it's after discussion items, so that
And I know that the public was not privy to the interviews.
would be after new business, not after old business.
They were all fantastic, and it was very hard to make a choice.
Okay, thank you.
After 7.2. But we did, we did come up with a choice, and our choice for student board member is
Yeah, 7.2, thank you.
That's the way the agenda channel is reading it.
Okay. Blissett?
Aye.
Leowulf?
Ms. Janice Thompson.
Aye.
And right now, we're going to give her the oath of office. So, thank you, Janice, and we hope that this is going to be a pleasant experience for you.
All right, so if you'd like to stand, I'll say it, and you just repeat after me. All right? I, Janice Thompson?
I, Janice Thompson.
Do solemnly affirm?
Do solemnly affirm.
That I shall faithfully discharge the duties?
That I shall faithfully discharge the duties?
Of the District 186 Student Board Member?
Of the District 186 Student Board Member.
I shall serve as board liaison to the student body?
I shall serve as board liaison to the student body.
I shall represent student interests to the board?
I shall represent student interests to the board.
I shall adhere to the highest ethical standards?
I shall adhere to the highest ethical standards.
And I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion?
And I shall surely respect the free expression of opinion.
Of all who come before the board?
Of all who come before the board.
Congratulations. And many of you may not know that Janice has actually worked in our technology department all summer long, too, helping us with the noble effort of getting all of our new computers ready to go and collecting all the old ones, so that hasn't been easy, I know, doing all that inventory. So, thank you for your service to the district, and I believe her reports are.
Yes, so you get to start out with a report.
To all high school students, we will have our first superintendent roundtable meeting on September 1st. It will be at 3 o'clock at 1900 West Monroe in the boardroom.
And of course, if we ever need to make those Zooms, we can do that as well. So, thank you so much. I'm looking forward to working with you and hope you get off to a great start.
You're welcome, Janice. Thank you so very much. We're going to look forward to your input. Superintendent, we'll move into 6.1, the superintendent's report.
Sure, we've got a, I've got a, obviously, my celebration slides today, but there was one other report that I wanted to make sure that I talked to the board about tonight. When, two years ago, the state legislator actually passed a law that allows us to utilize e-learning on our snow days, emergency days, ice days, cold days, things of that nature. And since we became pretty adept at doing remote learning, and we're still going to be a one-to-one school district where we give every student a device, this is on the table for, a way for us to provide learning during that time. One thing I want to explain to you is that this may not be for every single day. There may be a day where electricity is out throughout the city, or it is just really bad out and families need to focus on the safety of their homes and their families, where we still say it's a no-school day. But there were many a days that I've lived through where we had full weeks of below zero temperatures, unable to have school, and missed a lot of schooling that we had to make up at the end of the year, or that we just lost completely out of our calendar. So, this will be a way that we have a plan in place, so if e-learning is feasible that day, we would be able to communicate with parents and we would be able to enact this plan of action. We're not ready to present that plan to you tonight because it does come with some approval from our local unions, Springfield Education Association and other labor unions that are affected by students either being in school or not in school, and we're going to work through those. But we do need to have this completed by September 1st. Last year, that was waived by the state of Illinois because we were in remote learning. We got word that that is no longer waived. So, the other weird thing that happened with our calendar and our board report is that we needed to make sure that we were, had this voted on before September 1st, and we don't have a meeting until September 7th. So, I'm asking if we can call a very short special board meeting on August 30th to have a review of the entire plan, which you'll have in your hands before that, and vote yes or no for this coming school year to use those. Once again, this is not anything about remote learning due to COVID or any of those things. This is just about snow days and emergency days as they are. So, I didn't know if you had any questions. There is a set plan that we have to turn in to the Regional Office of Education before September 1st.
I think that sounds reasonable. On the 30th, since we have five Mondays, I would suggest maybe we get together around 5 o'clock.
Yeah, that'd be great. I think we'll run a personnel agenda through, if it's okay as well, at that meeting because we have, obviously, we're going to hire teachers and different people before then as well. So, that'll give us one extra Monday. All right, I would appreciate your time. Julie, do we need to call for an agreement on that, or is this an overall agreement of the board?
No, just a vote.
Is anybody opposed to having that special board meeting? Okay, so we'll be sending out to, you know, and posting that in the newspaper and getting that done. It does have to be posted in the newspaper for 10 days prior to the meeting, so that'll go out tomorrow, Julie, if you can help me with that. All right, and the presentation is up and ready to go. So, just to start off, Keep Kids in School Coalition, the KKIS, has been a great help in our community. That's all of the different healthcare providers in our community coming together, SAU, School of Medicine, Department of Public Health, and many others giving up their time to give physicals and immunizations to our students. We've had two, I'll give you some statistics on that in a minute, but we have another opportunity coming up on Tuesday, August 31st, from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. The Sangamon County Department of Public Health will have appointments. They are by call-in only. You need to set up an appointment for that day. It isn't come and line up, but set up an appointment, so that number is 217-535-3102. That is posted on our website, easy for you to find, so that you can have an opportunity to still get your physicals and immunizations. This is a big deal to us. You know, all students entering pre-K, kindergarten, 6th grade, 9th grade, and those new to the Springfield Public Schools must provide proof of a physical exam completed by a physician, nurse practitioner, or a physician assistant by the first day of school, which is August 23rd. An updated immunization record is also required, that it's turned into the school nurse. So, kindergarten and 6th grade and 12th grade students have specific immunization requirements that must be met by law, and children entering kindergarten 2nd, 6th, and 9th grade are required to have a dental exam, and students entering kindergarten, and those who are new to Illinois schools are required to have a vision exam. So, these are things that we all take very serious, and the nurses are making records, but we don't want to have kids have to leave because they don't have these records in hand. So, here's some pictures on Slide 4, Julie. I just want to thank the volunteers and the staff that came out to Southeast High School and Springfield High School. Last week, Saturday, was at Springfield High. You see some pictures. You can't see that one at the top as well as I'd like, but it is student families wrapped all the way around, waiting to get in. We had a lot of great volunteers that were able to help and look up records and help us move along, and we also gave out some COVID vaccines as well. 89 students were served on Tuesday at Southeast. 151 students were served on Saturday at Springfield High, so 240 students will be able to remain in school due to compliance because of the work of the Keep Kids in School campaign. So, thank you very much to our community who helped us with that programming. Can't tell you enough how important it is to please complete online registration or go in person to each school to register your child for school. If you've not yet done that, we need to know that you're coming back to us. So, even if you have already filled out your schedule for next school year, you still have to register, fill out the emergency card or update the information online, and let us know that you are returning. It is conceivable that people can move, so we want to make sure that those schedules that we have in the system are needed, and it's very important for our guidance deans at the middle and high schools, and also our assistant principals that are doing scheduling have that information, and our elementary schools can create their class lists. So, please make sure that you get students registered. Just call the school or visit the school for any assistance. If you're having trouble with any of the technology, they have computers you can use, they'll help you, walk you through, and make sure you go all the way through to complete and actually submit it, because we have some that have been started that haven't been finished. So, the schools will be calling you and asking you to finish those at this time. So, just give you the up-to-date registrations. We had students with registration. They were started at 10,993. That was as of Friday afternoon at the end of the day. Registrations that were completed were 8,738. Just to give you an idea, since we did ask about the vaccination numbers, 1,269 were fully vaccinated. The first dose were 204, so you can add that on, that they'll have their second dose before the beginning of the school year. And then those who have not chosen to be vaccinated or were too young and wouldn't get that, can't be vaccinated are 2,413. We had 1,546 choose to not answer the question. And then of the ones that we know of, we have 3,000 that are just not eligible, they're under 12. And the families who have been approved to, have said that they're approving us to use the SHIELD Surveillance Testing are about 74% of our actual registrants. Okay, moving on to the next slide. We wanted to let everybody know that the elementary school kits have arrived, and they were fully delivered to all of the elementary schools today. So, students will be getting their own school supply kits the first day of school that are designed for their, for their classroom age level, and they couldn't be more excited to get these. So, we've, we had some friends in Scope there this summer that were helping us show off the goods, but those will all be available for every elementary student, and the district will get a free school supply kit. I was watching the news this week. I guess school supplies are in short order, and Target is kind of sold out, so I guess this is a great thing and a way that we can conserve our students. We had a big shout-out to Jayla Davis, who is a Southeast High School student. She has been named to the Illinois State Board of Education Student Advisory Council. This is a big deal. It is something that every year, students apply for across the state, and they really do take turns and spread out those opportunities. And so, she was one of our star candidates that was accepted. This was established in 1975. They represent a diverse group of young leaders from across the state who have demonstrated the ability to advocate for educational equity on behalf of Illinois public school students. We're very proud of the Southeast Spartan, and we can't wait to hear feedback from her, and I'm sure she'll visit us at a board meeting to talk about her experience. Thank you to all of the high schools, the principals, assistant principals, deans, all the help and the support that really make freshman forward a success. We had that on August 12th, and we have open house events, too, for 10th through 12th graders on August 13th. This was pretty important this year because some of the students for the open houses had not even been in the high school before because of COVID. So, you know, making sure that they were able to get in, you know, follow the rules with, with, just kind of see how the whole operation plays out, how to get in their lockers and all of those things. So, it was a great day. That's the Southeast pictures, and then I've got some pictures of Springfield High and Lamphier on the next slide. And so, we were able to pass out some technology to our freshmen, and we're just really excited to have everything going and moving forward. Okay, Slide 11. This is maybe my coolest picture we've gotten this year. So, this is the new lighting at Southeast High School, and so not only did they get new LED lights throughout the whole entire gym, it is so bright, it's going to be great for games and PE class. The new lights turn on and off much faster. I think, Mr. Zimmers, you remember when you turned off the lights, you needed 20 minutes for them to come back on before, so you never turn the lights off. So, you could never do a really cool kind of entrance, and that's what we can do now. So, I'm saying watch out Bowles, because now we got the Spartans entrance. So, they, they did spotlights on each of the four corners that are going to be really cool for any of the events that they have at the, at the Bowles Gym there at Southeast High School. So, that's a great picture taken by Cody Trigg, and, and I just wanted to make sure that we, we talked about the updates we're doing there. The auditorium will be starting soon, but it's going to look pretty cool. We also finished the pathway that's going, this is something that's been kind of one of our wishlist items for quite some time. We have a lot of students from Jerome area that walk to Franklin Middle School, and there's no easy way to get there. There's no cut-through. So, there is a little cut in the fence, but it was more of a little ravine where you could get pretty muddy, and then you had to walk all the way through the field, and if it was wet, it was a pretty hard walk to school. So, we put this paved path all the way from Jerome all the way to the Franklin parking lot there along the fence line, and so it's a great improvement. It'll be easy to scoop in the winter for, you know, and shovel so that we can keep it up. And really, the area bike riders are pretty excited, too, because on the weekends, that's a bike cut-through so that they can get to Washington Park from all the bike trails that are out there. So, it'll be a great addition to the community. Butler Elementary School officially has a big hole in the side of its wall right now, but that is in preparation for installing an elevator and starting the renovation. So, you can start to see the preparation. The north stairs have been completely removed. The area is closed off from the remaining building, so it won't interfere with the beginning of the school year. The exterior footings and foundations will be started very soon, and water service line was installed this week, which was kind of important. So, all of those things are underway at Butler. Franklin Middle School, this is inside the cafeteria. It's starting to look like a very beautiful and expanded cafeteria space. The interior work is progressing. The restrooms and cafeteria are on track, and exterior foundations, the floor slabs are complete, masonry walls for the classrooms are complete and will be under construction and continuing in through the beginning of the school year. So, we're very excited about the progress that we're seeing there. All of our projects are underway. We are starting to see a few delays on supplies. That's just a name of the game right now. Really, if you're doing any home improvements or anything, it's just taking, taking time to get materials as we kind of, you know, are dealing with COVID and the restrictions. So, we're working hard to make sure that we keep everything on track so that students can start the school year, and making sure that we focus on those things that matter most. Workers were working all weekend long and wet well into the evening to get these things done. So, once again, we thank our local contractors and our construction crews that are working on these, on these events to make it, to make it a great opportunity for students. So, I wanted to take a little bit just to share some thoughts as we return into the school year. So, at this time, we are prepared to start school, full, in-person, five days a week, beginning on August 23rd. Many of you got to see our new school buses. You got to feel the air conditioning and the fresh airflow that'll be coming on to those new school buses. You got to see the navigation systems that connect to the First View app on the phone so that they can track and see when the buses are coming. You got to see some of the ways that they're going to separate students and reduce the capacity on some of the buses where possible to make sure that the, the travel to school is safe. Our teachers are ready to go with, you know, putting in distancing and wearing, wearing our mask at school and doing the things that we can do. But we are also anticipating and ready to navigate at any moment in time. So, our goal has always been accelerate through this crisis, to get us ready for the next step, to have us, have all the things in place that we need to, to make sure that our students are ready and can return to learn. It's so important that we have them back in person, but we're also ready for the changing tide, right? So, this picture kind of represents when you sail, you have to be ready to navigate at a moment's notice. You have to be ready for anything that may occur, things that you may not have expected to happen, rules that might come about that you didn't expect to be put in place, and how you navigate those is how you can measure your success. So, we're working very hard. The teachers are, you know, they, they don't have to come back till the 19th, but I know the dedicated teachers have been back in their classrooms, they're doing the things that they need to do to make their classrooms ready and organizing them a way so that they can maximize that social distancing so that we can appropriately contact trace if there were to be a positive case. And I just can't say enough for the work that I've already seen happening and I know will happen over the next few days. So, I'm excited. We welcomed back our new teachers today, and we'll welcome back all of our teachers on the 19th and 20th of this week, and all of our workers as well that work with any, any of our students, whether it be paraprofessionals or all of those that are supporting our students. And many of our social workers and social educators are back to work already, and I couldn't be more proud of them for the work that they're doing to help us prepare for the school year. So, I'm happy to entertain any questions, and thank you for the special board meeting to take care of that e-learning plan.
I don't have any questions, but I do have a couple of comments. I would like to thank all the medical personnel in Springfield for, again, this year stepping up and helping our students with immunizations and physicals. I had the opportunity to go to Southeast on the Tuesday, and they had quite the setup. If you're familiar with Southeast, it's kind of in a square or a rectangle, and I'm not sure exactly what the, what the shape is there, but at each point that you went, they had personnel set up there to greet you or to help you get online. I think they had four medical providers there that day, the day that I was there. And we need people to understand, we want absolutely everybody to be able to start this school year together, so if you have not got these immunizations or you're physical, please do it. Unlike COVID, these are required. These immunizations that we're talking about are required, so you can't, I don't want, I don't want this to get lost in, in the muddle of COVID and those vaccinations, because these, by the state mandates, we absolutely have to have those. So, again, I just want to thank the medical personnel in Springfield. As always, they stepped up big time, so thank you.
I'd like to second what you just said and to stress again, you know, for parents to get the vaccinations, immunizations, physicals, I mean, all of it. I know, Superintendent, you and the district have been relentless with your communication, and I mean relentless. I mean, my, my emails have worked. Personal emails, my phone, it worked.
I heard it went off a little early on Saturday. We already heard of it.
I've got Nalo Mitchell's voice burnt into my brain. But, I mean, seriously, you know, summer has absolutely flown by, and before we know it, we're going to be October 15th, and this is something every year. We, we don't want to reach out to families and say that, you know, you, you're going to miss out on an education because of these simple requirements, which are in the administrative rules. One question I had about the August 31st clinic, would they have, would families have an opportunity to get the COVID vaccine at that one as well?
I think so, because they're a site that, that provides the COVID vaccine. I wouldn't see any, but I don't have that knowledge right off the bat. Do you know, Jason, if they're going to have that available?
I imagine, like you said, they are a site, so I imagine you would provide that, but I don't know if that's part of the immunization, they're trying to sit in there on that day. Didn't we have any other type of...
Right, and that would only be for 12 and up at this point in time. IEMA, though, big shout-out to them for setting up the COVID clinic pieces at our, our two Keep Kids in School. They, they ran their own clinic in one area of the building, then immunizations and physicals were in another from Department of Public Health and SAU School of Medicine. So, we, it really was a great showing of support from our community, and we'll continue to have COVID clinics.
I was going to say, and that's something that we're going to be beating this drum at every board meeting, talking about the regular vaccinations, but also, you know, getting the COVID vaccination, because I would be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that over the past six weeks, we've seen our local numbers increase drastically. I mean, we've seen them go from 1% when we had 32 cases and only nine of which were youth, and now we're looking at 8.5%, 530 cases. And, you know, we're all getting emails from teachers, from parents, and they're asking... But, I mean, seriously, you know, summer has absolutely flown by, and before we know it, we're going to be October 15th. And this is something every year. We, we don't want to reach out to families and say that, you know, you, you're going to miss out on an education because of these simple requirements, which are in the administrative rules. One question I had about the, the August 31st clinic, would they have, would families have an opportunity to get the COVID vaccine at that one as well?
I think so, because they're a site that, that provides the COVID vaccine. I wouldn't see any, but I don't have that knowledge right off the bat. Do you know, Jason, if they're going to have that available?
Like you said, they are a site, so I imagine you would provide that, but I don't know if that's part of the immunization, that trying to sit in there on that day didn't really have the time to do that.
Right. And that would only be for 12 and up at this point in time. IEMA though, big shout out to them for setting up the COVID clinic pieces that are, are to keep kids at school. They, they ran their own clinic in one area of the building, then immunizations and physicals were in another from Department of Public Health and S.A.U. School of Medicine. So we, it really was a great showing of support from our community. And we'll continue to have COVID clinics.
I was going to say, and that's something that we're going to be beating this drum at every board meeting, talking about the regular vaccinations, but also, you know, getting the COVID vaccination, because I, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that over the past six weeks, we've seen our local numbers increase drastically. I mean, we've seen them go from 1% when we had 32 cases and only nine of which were youth, and now we're looking at 8.5%, 530 cases. And, you know, we're all getting emails from teachers, from parents, and they're asking, you know, throughout these increases, is it safe to return in person? And my response is, you need to get vaccinated. You know, we've got 51% of our county vaccinated right now, but there's a lot more folks out there that we really need to reach out to, because vaccinations only work if the majority of them get vaccinated. So I know that we've been making opportunities. I would like to see us continue to make opportunities to provide the vaccination. And if anybody needs any guidance, please feel free to reach out to any board members. Superintendent, we'll steer you in the right direction.
I have one other shout out. The NAACP, who's a great partner to District 186 and serving our students, is having a back to school event on August 21st. So that's this coming Saturday from 9:00 AM until 1:00 AM, and they are located on 11th Street. Free haircuts, that's awesome too. And they're doing free school physicals. Right now, they don't have the other immunizations, but they can get their physicals, so if they need it for athletics or school, they can get the physical. And they are giving free COVID-19, the Johnson and Johnson, and the Pfizer vaccine at that event, and they're also going to have some free snacks. So I just wanted to give a shout out for that as well. The more of those will be coming up throughout the community, I'm sure.
So I would like to add a clarification as we talk about returning to, to school. We talk about increased numbers in the community, et cetera. And so I'm getting a lot of questions from families about, you know, can we do learning at home like we did last year? And if anybody's ever talked to me, they know that I am, I totally love remote learning. It worked really well for my own child. We just don't have that opportunity in, right now. The ISBE does not allow for that opportunity, and we have to go by what they sanction for school districts to be able to do. So as, as soon as they say that we can move to a remote learning, you know, process and create that infrastructure, I would be the first behind it to help facilitate that and make sure that that becomes a reality, because I do know that for some students, it does work really well. So I don't think we should, you know, throw the baby out with the bathwater. I've said that before. And, you know, as lo, as soon as ISBE says that that can happen, then I, I think we start working towards that and building that for, you know, you know, it won't be this semester for sure, may not even be next semester, but certainly by, by the start of school next year, I would really like to see that as an opportunity.
I agree. I know a lot of students who normally don't do well in person have, have done well with online. So that should not be a subject that's just pushed to the side, because those students need to have the same opportunity as other students and to be equitable for, as other students. So we look at that as well.
I wholeheartedly agree, and this is something that we had talked about even last year. I think we heard recently from a heartfelt correspondence from a family, Lee, who was, you know, a shining example of how it can work. And, you know, unfortunately, though, like you said, ISBE provides us guidance, they provide us a lot of funding, and we've seen other schools throughout the state that have tried to ignore that guidance, and they get some pretty stern letters saying, hey, you're messing with your state recognition here.
Yeah.
And we don't want to be one of those. We don't want to get cross with, with the guidance that's come down our way. But I would completely be on board with having that conversation down the road.
I have a couple of questions about the keep kids in school. Michael, you talked about the October 15th. I know that's the state deadline for excluding, but do we have a earlier district?
We do. It's the first 10 days.
Okay.
Within 10 days, yeah.
So if students have not turned in their state required physicals within the first 10 days of school, I want to reiterate that they are.
Did we miss that last year?
We did only last year, just for that one year only. The biggest, I mean, and we'll look at the numbers, I'll bring the numbers to you. We had so many numbers out last year, but we, students were all remote. At that time, it was very hard to collect the information from families. I think the, the reason why we moved it to 10 days is if we wait until the October 15th, it's at the end of the first quarter. Students were often missing their end of the quarter assessments and things of that nature and not doing very well in school because of that, and we were well in. So if we can get it under control before the end of the quarter, it's better for students' grades.
Last year, we moved it all the way up to the deadline, is that right?
Yes, we did.
Okay. I assumed that was a permanent move.
Yes.
One more question about the building remodels. So do we have a backup plan if, let's say restroom work is not completed by next Monday?
Right, yes. So we always have a backup plan to a backup plan when we're doing the facilities, planning. Daryl's here, he knows which pieces are in place and which pieces aren't in place. We can always do temporary options if something's not available, but if, if they're here and they come at midnight, we'll be installing them at midnight. Daryl, do you have any updates?
No, that's correct. One of our biggest concerns is the delivery of unfortunately toilet partitions. And so those that we think are going to be delayed will be, will be building temporary ones in bathrooms to be used, and then we'll switch them out as they come in. Plastic, it's not really plastic, but the material that, that uses is, for some reason, that one's, one that's late delivery. Things like that, we find another solution to in order to get, get them on. We'll have kids in seats.
Thank you.
Well, I'm encouraged by the 800, or the 8,738 people that have completed registration. And I know there's a lot of people that like to wait till the last minute. August 23rd is a week from today, so I would encourage everybody to please get registered so we, so we can get things up and running and have your students in school. So, you know, please, folks, registration is, is key, and, you know, following up with Mr. Zimmers, you know, immunizations and physicals are, are essential too. So please, please keep that in mind. The next order of business is 7.1. Old business. Do, do any board members have any old business they'd like to bring up? Seeing none, our next order of business is 7.2. New business.
I've got some new business.
Mr. Miller?
Yeah, I just want to give a shout out to Principal Williams and a warm welcome to Assistant Principal Hood, and a huge thank you to all the hardworking teachers and staff at Springfield Ball Charter School. My wife and I dropped our girls off for the first day of school today, and it was definitely a surreal feeling. You know, it's, it's been 18 months since they walked through those doors, but they were ready. And I have to give a credit to the coordinators and the team leads at Project Scope for the services that they provided this summer and for helping to get my girls prepared. You know, their experience over at ENUS this summer got them acclimated to all the new safety protocols that are going to be a part of our new normal for a little while, and that has undoubtedly been a major asset to their return to in-person learning. So I just wanted to give a shout out to Ball Charter.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Okay, so in, with our change in the agenda, old business and new business have been discussed, so we will move to public comment. Ms. Hammers, do you want to read?
I've got to say a couple of things here, and there's been a lot here to digest. We've heard on both ends of the spectrum here from kids are scared to death to attend school, and on the other side, asking for a pause for in-person learning. And I think that represents what we've been hearing from the community. I just have to say, on a personal note, having seen the kids that have shown up to class this morning, I didn't see anybody scared to death. I do understand that there's a virus that can be spread around the community. I also understand the majority of those who are in the hospital are unvaccinated. That's why we need to encourage vaccinations. You know, the ultimate metric that we're, we've been trying to avoid is hospitalizations and deaths. And, you know, I, at this point, I think I would ask if, if we could ask Memorial Medical Center to reinstitute their dashboard. They had all along that they were providing guidance to us. I know they haven't had a dashboard in a while, but following hospitalizations is going to be an extremely beneficial tool as we go back to in-person learning to help us continue to make good decisions to keep kids in school in person five days a week all year long, which is the goal. That's a mandate that ISBE has given to us, and that's the goal that we all have.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Moving on to Agenda Item 9.1, the business report. Superintendent?
Mr. Franks.
Wait, did we miss one?
You missed 8.1.
8.1?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Shoot, we did skip right over that.
Yeah, we missed that one, sorry.
All right. I have a pretty exciting presentation in the community, so you, you're almost back. We'll be right back with you. All right.
Hold that thought.
So I'd like to invite up the outlet representatives and also Mr. Terrence Jordan to present with us a little bit on a great mentoring partnership with Douglas School. We couldn't be more excited. And we also have Carrie Borders, the principal at Douglas, with us to share her excitement for this program. And we will be asking for a vote on this this evening so that we can get things off the ground as soon as possible. All right.
All right, good. Board, President Maher, Superintendent Gill, members of the board, we have a very, very exciting opportunity for Springfield School District. We're looking to have a mentoring partnership with the outlet and Douglas School. It's called mentoring, but there's so much more that the, that the outlet is going to provide for our students. I have Michael Filon and Ms. Borders that's going to come and talk more about it.
No pressure. I'm worried about this podium, but every time I step up, I get a little bit nervous. Am I okay?
Maybe it's all the cords that are on.
Maybe, I don't know. Well, we just want to thank you for this opportunity to be able to share some of our thoughts and ideas. My name is Carrie Borders on the side administrator at Douglas. When Mr. George the first approached me about this possible partnership, to say I was super excited is an understatement. I think I didn't sleep Friday night just thinking of all the possibilities for the outlet and our kids. We've worked with the outlet before, Mr. Filon, but it's, it was in isolation. So we worked with a couple of kids here and there, but, but the opportunity for this partnership, I think, is really going to take us to the next level. Do you want to, oh, you're already there, okay. So when we look at this partnership and, and really what it means for our kids, I think I look at it as an equitable partnership. When I say equitable, I think of Lou Baker, who used to be a part of our awesome district, and she always said, "All means all." Our kids don't have to be a data point to get the supports and, and the mentorship from the outlet. They simply have to be a student in our program. This includes both our young men and our young women, which for our young women, it's a unique opportunity. We constantly give out our young men. This is also going to allow us some mentorship for our young women. It aligns with the district strategic goal number two, which is to enhance academic and emotional support so students can reach their full potential. We have often debated at Douglas, kind of which comes first, the chicken or the egg? If we have engaging academics, does the behavior decrease? If we get the behavior in check, do we see a growth in academics? We've decided that it, it goes hand in hand, and I really think this partnership that we have with the outlet is really that hand in hand piece, that missing link that we've been waiting for for a while. It also aligns to our SCL competencies of self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. We have been in some preliminary conversations. We've met, kind of one, the three of us, we've met one-on-one. We've asked, came to a couple of our staff members just to kind of have a conversation of what it possibly looked like. So we've talked about onsite in-class support, so the mentors coming into the classrooms. We've talked about the after-school support or tutoring, whether that's present recovery, whether that's community opportunities with the outlet. We've discussed financial literacy, how to be financially stable. As, as young men and women, what does that look like? How can they support themselves? We've discussed goal setting and really what that looks like for college and career readiness. All of those things, we've kind of had this kind of broad conversation, but really our first goal is to establish those relationships with our kids. Our kids really have to trust these new adults that are coming in to our building and wanting to support them. So that will be the, the big kickoff for our program. I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right. I think Ms. Borders has said it all. Definitely want to thank you guys for allowing us to come here, and I'm excited about if this does pass. And my name, my name is Michael Filon, the founder of the outlet. We've been running about 15 years now in the community, working with a lot of District 186 students. I have my own two students here that are my kids, Mary and Kingston, that are at Isles and Franklin this year. So we're really passionate about the school district here and, and not only about the kids at Douglas, but also just all kids inside the district. So our plans, if it does go, is to be there from 8 o'clock until 1:30 with our team of 10 to 15 mentors, parent engagement people, myself. I'm committed to being there Monday through Friday, even though I have my other duties. But I think this is so important to our community here that I'd be there with my team. We believe in Douglas. This isn't just the first time we come to Douglas, us as a team. We've been there for over five or six years now, working at Douglas, working with the students there. I have a heart and a passion for the students that some people say they were left behind, that people don't think about, that people don't really care about, but we do care about the students at Douglas. Just some of the things that we're going to kind of highlight, I won't read everything that's on the slide, but, you know, we really believe in, there's like four things that we're going to kind of highlight. How to manage stress while remaining alert and calm. Controlling one's emotions and behaviors. Learning how to pay attention to the feelings being expressed as well as the spoken words of others. Also becoming aware and respectful of differences. I think those things are big for our students, not only just the young, young males, but also the young ladies also. Those are some of the things that we will be working on. Also, we will have a, a clinical psychologist also with us two days a week, also offering her services for free. Doesn't cost the school district from that aspect, as I heard from other entities that have came into Douglas. Also, again, this program will, you know, give us opportunities for the students to dream, and not just, a lot of times, you have to see it to believe it. And I think if we can show the students, there's a world outside of Springfield, there's a world outside of their community, then, you know, we can really help these students begin to grow even more. The staff and faculty at Douglas, they're doing a great job. We just want to kind of come aside them and really help them get to the, to the next level. So I'm nervous too, but I'm excited about this program if it does move forward. If it doesn't move, move forward, we're still excited about helping the district. Thank you. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Miller.
So when I met with Mike, and I said, "Dream a dream, what would that dream look like?" And this was his dream, to have a fully implemented mentoring program at Douglas. I talked to the superintendent, she loved it. So we started getting to work, working on how, how that would look, how to make it happen. He brought a proposal, and here we are today, seeking your approval for this great opportunity for our students. Any questions?
I don't have a question, I have a comment. I've known all three of you for a while. I trust all three of you. If you say this is going to work, I believe it and for it, because I, you guys know what you're talking about, so good job, good job of getting this together.
The other thing that we had talked about and emphasized was that so many of the students at Douglas, we really, we've lost engagement with them during COVID and, and remote learning. It was hard, and it, and it was, it was a difficult time, and this is so important to have this hopeful program to reengage our students in the coming year, and no matter what the landscape brings us, just be ready to support them in any way possible. And, and so this money that we're going to use will be some of our federal funding for strong during-the-day mentoring, tutoring supports, and also after-school programming. And that's exactly what the letter of, of the Esper funding was, was designed to do, is to reengage students in the learning, get them to college and, and career options that are, that are going to help them be on high school and graduation. So thank you so much for your creativity and your hard work during the summer months. We appreciate that.
I, I don't know you like Mr. Zimmers does, but I am excited in what you're talking about and what you're explaining. I, I, the social emotional learning pieces are, are huge, and knowing that those things kind of fell away for such a long period of time, I think this is exciting to hear. So I'm, thank you for bringing it.
Yeah, great idea. Great idea.
And also on the other side of the spectrum, I, I don't know the three of you all, I meant Michael just one hour ago. But I've been reading about what you've been doing in the community in Illinois Times, and I got to say, this is, I think this is money well spent. This should be a community that cares about everybody, and I'm, I'm grateful that there are people like you that are dedicating yourself to this. Good luck, and you've got my support.
Is this a whole-year program?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And we're dreaming, dreaming for some summer opportunities.
That's right. Summer and after-school. Mike, you're going to be big, man. So, and you know, it's going to be unique, it's the first of its kind, and I've been in the district about 20 years, and it's the first of its kind. We've had mentoring programs, but to have a program that's fully implemented into a school that's very unique and exciting.
We can't wait to hear your results.
All right. That's part of it. Check your data. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a very exciting program, and I know it's going to be successful with all your enthusiasm, so we appreciate that. Okay, well, Superintendent, now we're going to move to 9.1. Sorry for the delay, Mr. Fratz.
Hello, Mr. Fratz.
That's quite all right. It's hard to follow that.
Yeah.
Thank you, President Mars, members of the board. I'll turn your attention to the Business Office report there, as presented up there by Ms. Hammers. Moving to the second page, you see our revenue expenditures summary, both month and year to date through July. Ed Fund revenues, expense and expenditures, we had net increases of $123,000 and our O&amp;M fund a decrease of about $334,000. Turn to the next slide, please. Outstanding state payments, again, continue to be minuscule. This driver's ed money is still outstanding. We've been fully reimbursed for all of our FY 2021 monies to this point, including all of our mandated categoricals, which is fantastic. And next slide, please. This is our other financial data, again, as of July 31st, '21, with comparative data to July of 2020 as well. Cash in bank, both operating and non-operating, $65.2 million. Investments, $78.6 million. Total cash investments at $143.8 million. Non-investment interest, a year-to-date, $21,000. Current rate on our mobile accounts is 0.35%. Turn your attention to the sales tax proceeds. Interestingly enough, we collected our third straight month of over $1 million during our August collection, which was for the month of May. So March, April, and May, all over $1 million. That is a trusted territory so far for us. All of our months prior to that were under that range, most of them well under. So comparatively, fiscal year-to-date, $9.96 million. That accounts for 11 fiscal months, again, going through May. If that holds true, and we get another $1 million in August, or excuse me, in September for June, it'll put us at or near $11 million, which I will say did exceed or would exceed our preliminary projections as we went into the sales tax referendum some two to three years ago now, which was based on projections of about $10 to $10.4 million. So we are in the positive territory that we're having to present that to you. Final slide is our cash flow forward. This is again our capital projects fund, all of our major projects, with the exception of health life safety, where it goes through this fund. Cash at the end of the month, or beginning of the month, $83.2 million. Revenues, which is sales tax proceeds as well as interest, $1.04. Expenditures, $1.77 million for any cash investments number in that fund of just over $82.5 million at the end of July. And a full detailing of those expenditures is in our report.
Just have to say, I'm so happy to see the county sales tax coming in the way it is because, I mean, clearly estimates were on the conservative side early on on what we would generate. And, you know, if anything, that's a silver lining to $3 a gallon of gas. So, you know, we heard it...
I don't know about that.
Hey, your kids went to Fairview and they had some unexpected costs the last meeting.
Yeah, but, man, it cost me so much to fill my gas tank.
You're investing into the future, so.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Fratz. Superintendent, moving on to 10.1.
President Mars and members of the board, I recommend approval of consent action items 10.2 through 10.12 as described in the corresponding resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Hammers?
Lael Wolf?
Aye.
Mars?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Ringer?
Aye.
Zimmers?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Blissett?
Aye.
That is seven aye votes.
Okay, we are moving on to 11.1. Superintendent?
Mrs. Sherman? Oops. Oops. Sorry about that. Okay, President Mars and members of the board, the superintendent recommends adoption of the personnel recommendations with a couple changes. Page seven, letter E, classified, number one, please remove from consideration. Addendum, number three, letter D, please remove from consideration.
Okay, is there a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Hammers?
Mars?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Ringer?
Aye.
Zimmers?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Blissett?
Aye.
Lael Wolf?
Aye.
Mars?
Aye.
That is seven aye votes.
Moving on to Agenda Item 11.2, Superintendent?
Yes, this is back to Mrs. Sherman for our salary agreement with the Springfield Principals and Administrators Association, otherwise known as SPAA.
President Mars and members of the board, the superintendent recommends adoption of the following resolution. Whereas the Board of Education of Springfield Public School District 186 has concluded bargaining of a new agreement with the Springfield Principals and Administrators Association, and whereas the terms of the agreement have been tentatively approved by the bargaining teams of the Board of Education and Springfield Principals and Administrators Association, now therefore it be resolved that the Board of Education of Springfield Public School District 186 hereby accepts and approves the tentative agreement to be in effect for the 2021-2022 school year.
Can you entertain a motion? So moved. Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Hammers?
Miller?
Aye.
Ringer?
Aye.
Zimmers?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Blissett?
Aye.
Lael Wolf?
Aye.
Mars?
Aye.
That is seven aye votes.
Moving on to 11.3, Superintendent?
Yes, Mrs. Sherman, for salary determination of the central office staff.
President Mars and members of the board, salaries for administrative staff are reviewed annually and set for the coming school year, including central office staff. The superintendent recommends approval of the salaries for central office staff for the 2021-2022 school year.
Can you entertain a motion? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none?
Ringer?
Aye.
Zimmers?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Blissett?
Aye.
Lael Wolf?
Aye.
Mars?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Ringer?
Aye.
Zimmers?
Aye.
Mars?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Ringer?
Aye.
That is seven aye votes.
Moving on to Roll Call Item Number 11.5, Superintendent?
This is the annual resolution regarding the acceptance of the FY 21-22 tentative budget. I'll turn that over to Mr. Fratz.
Thank you, President Mars, members of the board. The superintendent recommends adoption of the following resolution. Be it resolved to accept the school district's tentative budget for FY 2021 school year, which is being prepared by the administration pursuant to Section 17-1 of the Illinois School Code. And be it further resolved that this tentative budget is to be made available for public inspection in the school district's offices located at 1900 West Monroe, Springfield, Illinois, beginning the 20th of August, 2021. And be it further resolved that the Secretary of the Board is directed to cause proper and legal notice of the availability of the budget for inspection to be published. And be it further resolved that the public hearing on this budget be established for 6:30 p.m. September 20th, 2021. And be it further resolved that at any time during this period of examination of tentative budget which is on file may be amended or revised.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Hammers?
Blissett?
Aye.
Lael Wolf?
Aye.
Mars?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Ringer?
Aye.
Zimmers?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
That is seven aye votes.
Okay, moving on to 12.1. Our next regular board meeting will be on September the 7th, 2021. Our executive session will start at 5:15. Public session will start at 6:30. Making note that we will have a special session on August 30th at 5:00 p.m.
I do believe we'll move exec session back to 5:30?
Yes.
With a 6:30 start? That's just a...
Thank you.
We did that only because we're starting the meeting early.
You know, I just, again, appreciate all parents and guardians getting their students registered. Please continue to do that so we have a good accounting and a good start starting on next Monday. You know, immunizations and physicals are required, so please take advantage of the clinics that are available. You know, try to, if that doesn't work in your schedule, you know, if you have a personal position, you know, please, please get that taken care of as quickly as possible. Any fellow board members, is anyone having other business to discuss this evening?